I call this meeting of the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 5th at 7:00 PM, and I would ask the Administrator, please call the roll.
Trustee Head?
Here.
President Klein?
Here.
Trustee Colleen Ober- Brian Berglund?
Here.
That's a mouthful. Trustee Ortner is absent. Stanford absent. Trustee Wickin?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you Gloria. We have minutes from the January 8th meeting that needs some approval.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the January 8th, 2013 Board Meeting.
Second motion.
Okay Ted, we'll give that one to you. Are there any recommended changes, any edits? If not, all in favor of the motion, or all in favor of accepting the minutes as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item number three, it's at this time that we have an opportunity for residents to make the Board aware of an issue, topic, or an opportunity not on the agenda, and I understand we do have someone. Sir, would you please identify your name and your residence?
Kevin Atkins with the Town of St. Joseph. I'm here representing the Town of St. Joseph Bridge Crossing Committee commissioned by Dan Gavin and the Town Board. It's a real simple question, we're, we have the Loop Trail coming, wanting to know if the Town of North Hudson is interested in trying to connect with the Loop Trail, and also with that effort, maybe connectivity to the City of Hudson. And if so, who can I talk to?
Well, you're talking to the right people.
Great. I'll let you know that I've talked to the state, the DNR, the county. We are trying to, we have a group of people looking at grants and other federal dollars, state dollars, to enhance our trails. We can't do them all. Your admit said that you have some high school kids working on another part of the trail. So, we're interested in working with you and making this, hopefully so your citizens and other residents from the south can hook up to the trail.
Kevin, has anyone taken a, taken a look at the map and then gone out and taken a look at where you think this trail should be?
I merely looked at it with Gloria from your end, and I met with Denny Darnold, who I guess has been designated for the City of Hudson, so I've looked at your north and your south end, but really leave it up to you to tell us how you want to get to us or to them. And I guess, you know, obviously, we're looking at, I'm not asking for any money, we're just trying to see what we can do.
But we are.
Well, we are, but we're willing to work with you. There's a point system in the mitigated funds, and by partnering, and also, points are awarded if we work with the county and the DNR, and we're going to work with everybody so we get the highest points. We have several people that are working on grants, and in effort with the DNR, they're very much interested. So, we're hopeful that we can, if you want to be, to be able to get to the trail, we want to help you. I think that's, you need to know that.
The trail, do you envision this as a hiking trail, a biking trail? How big do you envision it being, how wide? Because that dictates also where that trail can be.
That's a great, that's a great question. We're going to take whatever you give us, but let me tell you what we'd like to see as far as parameters, but we'll take whatever you can give us. We'd like to be able to have a walking trail and a bike trail, they can be simultaneous, depending on the width that's available. And, you know, when I look at your connection with the City Hudson, we can either come across the bridge, or look at if there's an opportunity for your community to work with, I believe it's the railroad to come across that end, and then maybe up. I would ask you to look at how it can benefit your commerce in town, and also safe, public safety for your residents. So, I'm not here to suggest how you get there. We can certainly look at everything that your options are to get you to where you need to be, but we're not trying to tell you where to, where to bring it. We can only tell you what access points we have. I can't speak for the City of Hudson, but once we get an identified person from your community, and look at some maps, then there's going to be a DNR state and other people from the Bridge Committee coming together to say where we think we can get it done. We have a person, Mark Vines, who's working on the Bridge Committee with Somerset, the village and the town, Richmond, and Roberts, and, and everybody. So, you know, you're probably our south quadrant, but I believe that there's a benefit to your residents and also to your commercial businesses. Mark?
Kevin, is the Town of Hudson on board with this?
You know-
Do we have to go through them to get to?
That, again, that's a great quest, question, Mark. That's the last community I have not talked to. Not that you were not the first one on my list, it's just, honestly, you know, I, you know, I'm a volunteer, and so, I'm trying, you know, I'll get with them, and obviously we need to work-
I was just curious if, with-
Right, and I have not had any conversations with them, but we're certainly going to, I promise you, with, by Wednesday next week, we will have talked to them, but I don't know where they're at with it.
Oh, that's okay. Gloria, were you telling Kevin about when Dick Thompson was at our Public Works meeting about the trail thing? When Kevin referenced somebody looking at doing a trail?
Oh, I just mentioned that along Cratley, that the high school kids that Mark-
Oh, they're-
Or was it the university?
We had a group in last month looking at developing-
Oh.
You know Dick Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, they were looking at doing something going out to Cratley, so I didn't know what's working in that direction. And it was all new to us, we took it on at Public Works as, just for no other place to go right now, because we don't have much of a trail committee, or anything like that going on.
Okay, well, from what Gloria told me, some really positive news for you, after meeting with Mr. Heisey from the county, it looks like there's an old rail bed. I don't know if it's in your community, or in Hudson, is it in yours?
Yeah.
They want it to get to Willow River. And so, that's a big, that should be a big thing for your residents. And, and we're going to work with them, but I want to make sure that if we, if you want to get to that Loop Trail, we want to work with you to get you there. And we do know that, you know, this is a joint cooperative effort. This isn't our town, that town, you know, we, you know, we're all kind of one melting pot here. I live in St. Joe, but I work and, and go to all these places, Hudson, North Hudson, and Somerset, so.
Well, if you, if you need a point, person or a committee, any suggestions on what direction to give Kevin at this point?
I don't, I don't think you probably can make any kind of recommendation, but now that you got that information, it may be something that we should put on the Board Agenda to assign a committee or appoint person, and whatever you have for suggestions.
Yes.
I was just going to tell you that the Park Board has looked into purchasing that property from the railroad to make, and make a trail, and had kind of checked into how he could connect it to Hudson, but the railroad is not interested in selling that to us.
That's fine, we will work-
Or giving it to us.
That's fine, we'll work with that bridge. We can, we can, in really a real short conversation with the City Hudson, they can, they can get us across to the bridge to your port, so, it's really up to you, you know, if, if the Board decides.
Which side of Malalo?
Pardon me, sir?
The north side of Malalo, or the south side of Malalo?
Well, sir, we, if we can't come across the railroad bridge, we have to come across the only bridge across Malalo.
Okay, so the plan wouldn't be to create another bridge?
No, sir. No, sir.
Do you have a website? You said you were part of a group that-
I'm with the Town of St. Joseph, and we are the Bridge Crossing Committee sanctioned by the Chairperson, Dan Gavin, and the, and the Town Board. Our body makes up approximately 22 to 25 members, and we're trying to create partnerships. We are not trying to do this ourselves. We have a lot of things, and this is the first thing that we'll come, we're coming to you about to partner with. I'm not asking for any money, you know, because I understand, no communities have any money, and so, but I think there's a way to get this done. In listening, the sad thing is, is that they think 35 is a trail, and I'm going to tell you, if I had kids, there's no way in heaven I'm having them go from St. Joseph to your community on 35, right?
Who is it that thinks 35 is a trail?
Well, the state asked the county to widen 35 the last time they did a Millan overlay, and I don't know if that was an effort. I have reached out to the state person on their trails, and I have not had that meeting, but I believe Mark Vines from our community will. But we, once we identify all the partners, we're going to ask for a meeting where the state, DNR, county, and other municipalities come together so we can look at a map and see what we can do, and then on the other side, we've got people looking for money for this.
Okay. Thank you Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four is appointment of Gloria to be the acting Village Clerk. Do we have a Board member who want to make a motion here?
May I move Resolution Number 2013, one, appointing or anointing Gloria Cross as acting Village Clerk?
That was good. I think we got that.
Second.
Thank you Colleen. This is a temporary position, is that right? All right?
Sure.
How long do you anticipate that you would be wearing this crown?
Not long.
Anybody have any questions regarding the resolution, or the issue? I believe as by law, we have to have a clerk, and our clerk has left us, so. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, all in favor of, oh, this is a resolution, so I'll ask for a roll call vote. Want to start us off Ted?
Yes.
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 Very good, motion passed. We have an ordinance under consideration, and this is Ordinance 01, 2013, Amending Chapter 98 Regarding Zoning. And Terry, I believe you were involved with this?
I was at the Planning Commission. I am a little, sorry to not see Mike Meiser out there.
I noticed, I looked out there, I was expecting to see Mike.
I wonder if he thinks it's next month or something, but what this is, is the, I can't remember the guy's name, but somebody came with a proposal in the, in the old railroad yards-
Yep.
-to put in some tanks for some washer, and it went back and forth, and back and forth, and there was an awful lot of discussion at the Planning Commission level, and at the Board level too, about that, and about how our ordinance dealt with that, and, and what, this is what came out of that, that the Planning Commission got together a couple times and talked about, well, what kind of storage tanks, what do we want to do, what don't we want to do? I think I'll start with the last part, which is on page four. What they proposed-
Warehousing, yeah.
...was to take out warehousing of hazardous substances, just take that out, and then add a new number 10, which is just to prohibit storage tanks of hazardous substances, and rather than us trying to define them, and I think it was Mike and Mary Wecken that came up with this, just to reference the, the federal code on this, to, to define what are these bad, bad things, and let, let their definitions stand for us, so that we don't have to be the chemical engineers who are deciding what are the really horrible chemicals and what, and what aren't. So, that was their proposal, after they talked about it for quite, at length, to, to do that. And the structure one-
That was simply defining a structure.
Yeah, that's all it does, is to provide a definition for the word "structure," and there, I'm just trying to remember from last month where the, that discussion went. I think there was just some discussion about whether it's useful or not, and for the most part, the Planning Commission felt it was, it was useful to try to have a definition of structure. We use the word "structure" through, in the ordinance, in a number of places, and if you, if you have a word in an ordinance that doesn't have a, a definition in your ordinance, then you just kind of go back to common usage, the dictionary definition, or sort of what people ordinarily think, think of a word, when they think of it, what does it mean? If you do have a definition, then your definition overrides that sort of common, common definition, and I think at the end of the day, they thought, they thought we should have a, yeah, neither of these are really legal questions, they're more policy questions, that the Planning Commission just felt that these were good ideas to put these in place, and I certainly had no problem with them one way or the other.
Hey Terry, getting back to that item 10 on the-
Yeah.
The storage tanks of hazardous substances, chemicals, inflammable liquids used in manufacturing process, extremely hazardous substance, and divide by section, da-da-da, these are not permitted?
Yes.
And it's under the conditional uses?
Well, storage tanks of hazardous substances, chemicals, and flammable liquids is a conditional use, which it also used to be-
Okay.
-but extremely hazardous substances, and that's where you go to the federal, federal rule, are, are just not permitted at all.
Okay.
So, it's sort of a two-parter.
Got you.
What I like Terry, is that you have been involved within, in this process, and I have a higher level of confidence that it's gone through the legal channels to make sure that we are not violating any existing codes, federal or state.
I think-
And then in fact, we're using those very codes to reinforce our own.
At the same time, George, a few years ago, the state loosened up the conditional use permitting that a lot of municipalities have been doing, they deemed it unlawful, so.
Could happen.
Yeah.
My concern is tightening those ropes a little more again. But I'm all right with this, if that's what the Planning Commission wants.
I, I think this would allow, well, this would allow what that guy wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
This would allow that as a conditional use, but if somebody comes in with, they want a tank farm for gasoline or something, it would not allow that.
Got you.
Okay. How would this, does this impact at all, somebody actually, oh, having a fuel tank in their garage, that they're mixing their own? And we know that there are people who do that.
It's not commercial property.
It's not commercial, okay.
This is only in the commercial district, I'm trying to think how that would fall under, I mean, I don't think-
Well, let's not give anybody any new ideas, can we? Can I move to adopt Ordinance 01-2013, Amending Chapter 98, Zoning, Article 1? And do I need to read this whole thing?
No.
No, please no, no.
Thank you, I didn't put enough density-
Did he, did he read it? Did he read enough?
Yes.
Were you ready for a second?
Second.
Are you ready to second?
Okay, I heard a Stan second over there. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance change? Hearing none, Colleen, would you like to start us off?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move to adopt Ordinance 02-2013, Amending Chapter 98, Zoning, Article 8, 2.
Second.
This one came out of, again, note, shall we just talk about a couple of the provisions of this, and the reason for the changes? This has to do with daycare, and item six, daycare providers certified or licensed by the state and serving not more than eight enrollees. You want to talk about that Terry?
I can give you an introduction to that, and then there's one other part to this too. Both of these, again, they didn't come out of thin air, although this first one is something that I think Gloria may have the history of this a little better than I do, but I think we got a letter from DHS, I know Donna was still the Assistant Clerk then, telling us that our ordinance, that it was illegal for us to have this type of daycare as a conditional use, and that, that, that came to us, I don't know, years ago really, five, six years ago at least, so, and we just have never done anything about it, but for some reason, I don't know if Becky was just trying to clean up ordinances or what, but she came to me and we talked about this a little bit. I don't think we had an actual applicant that drove this, I think this was from the DHS that, that was driving this, and while I didn't 100% agree with the DHS opinion on this, and there's been no case law, and it's never gone to court, their opinion is that we, we have to permit, basically, we have to permit certain types of small daycares, as long as those people get the state license that they're required to get, we don't have the authority to stop them. So, that, that was the DHS opinion on it, that it's state regulated, and so villages and cities can't regulate it. Now, this is only for, for pretty small ones, so that's, that's why the second change in there, we changed the number from 10, which we used to have, to 8, because 8 is the, it is the limit in the state law, for the small ones. We can still regulate ones bigger than that.
I have a question Terry, DHS, is that Department of Homeland Security?
No, no.
That was good.
Health and Human Services.
That's the hell that they have to do. I mean, there's, there's so many different, you know, acronyms out of Mordor.
I'm sorry.
It's like, what the hell?
I'm not sure if by Mordor, you're referencing Washington DC or Madison.
That'd be DC.
Yeah. This, DHS is a state Department of Human Services.
Okay. I just wanted to know which one of the, you know, the alphabet departments was, you know-
Yep, it's the State Department of Health and Human Services.
I feel much better now.
So, that's part one. Part two was driven by a complaint, that's on the second, on page three, at the bottom of it, and this one again, Becky and I went over this, and then went over it with the Planning Commission. Basically, we had somebody running a taxi business out of his home, and the neighbors were complaining about it, and when we contacted them, he said, oh, I'm not running that taxi business, my brother's running the taxi business. Well, you're the property owner. Well, yeah, but I'm, I don't know, my brother's just doing it. Well, so, what, what we decided, we thought we'd try to do is just tighten up the ordinance a little bit to make, make it clear to people, although I believe it was unlawful prior to that, that you can't run a business like that out of your home without coming in and getting a conditional use. So, that, that's what this change will do.
Would you also explain what is, the changes of item B on that same page above that? I read this-
Well, that goes back to the daycare thing.
Yeah.
What, under our home occupations, again, everything that's not underlined or crossed out, everything that's not underlined was there to begin with.
Yeah.
All we're doing there is dropping it down from 10 to 8, which is, which again reflects the state law-
Okay.
-and then we are saying they are permitted, because that's what we've been told by the state.
Understand that, but in that same sentence, then we start talking about bed and breakfast establishments.
Well, that's, that's the way it used to be, so there's no change to the, to the ordinance with respect to bed and breakfasts. That's what's always been there, and that's what stays there.
Oh, I understand that, it just seems strange to see daycare and bed and breakfast in the same, okay, all right.
It's, maybe they should be two separate ones, you know, but we didn't, you know, we didn't change something that was not on the agenda to change.
Okay.
I guess.
Anybody else have any more?
There may be some logic to doing it that way, and have a B and a C.
Yeah.
Let's not worry about logic at this point.
You got that Doug?
Yeah, I wrote that down. Any questions, any further questions from the-
It'll get worse the months to come.
Any other questions from the far right side of this table?
I'm just glad I'm going to be along for the ride, Brandon.
Any more questions from the left side? We're going to have a roll call vote here, Colleen, you want to start us off?
Yes.
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 Okay.
We're short so many, I'm losing track of what I was going to say.
We'll let you know. New business from the Board of Staff, we, we're, I was kind of hoping that Brant would be here, but I'd like to appoint, and I'll make the motion to appoint Brant Worrell and the alternate, his wife Carol, to be the representative of the, on the, representative of the village on the Senior Citizens Board.
I'll second that, George.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All in favor of accepting Brant and his lovely wife Carol? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Let's see. At the next Board meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion, that'll still be at the March 5th meeting, I'll ask for a motion to accept, or to have the, the April Board meeting on March 26th. We do this every year, and that's because Election Day is the first Tuesday of April. All right, so that's nothing that we need to act on, just to draw to your attention, that's what we will do. Actually, I think that's all I have. Gloria?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Well, I ask you, first of all, as the Administrator, if you have any comments. Now, as the acting clerk, do you have any comments?
No.
Plan Commission, oh, you were at it, weren't you?
I think all the business that occurred at the Plan Commission is, is done at the moment.
Okay, very good, didn't want to, okay. Personnel and Finance Committee meeting met a little while ago, and we decided to recommend to you folks that we pay our bills, and if you will, take a look at the appropriate page, where it shows the motions for paying our bills, now is that time, somebody want
George, I'd like to approve the December 2012 non-recurring claims of $14,042, and February 2013 non-recurring claims of $94,855.64, for claims totaling $108,897.64.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have any questions regarding this, these bills? This is the month when we see a big bump, and that's because there are a couple of contracts in there that we have with the city, that we need to pay. One is the library, that's the first half of the library, and also the first half of EMS. I think that was it, wasn't it Terry, they kicked that up pretty high? Okay. Do you have any questions regarding any of the other bills? Okay, Ted, you want to start us off with the yes, no?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. That's the claims. Item B is the Village Clerk's job description, Gloria, you want to talk about it a little bit?
Well, with, over time, we've been trying to get together position descriptions due to the fact of, or the splitting of the duties between the Administrator no longer being the Administrator, Clerk, and Treasurer, so, to section that off, a couple of months ago, you've seen the Administrator's position description come through, and this is the Clerk's, and hopefully, it's got everything in it. The, our President looked at it, and he found some corrections that he would like to see put in there, and so, I think it is a very good position description, and clarifies the responsibilities of that position.
Thank you Gloria. The Finance Committee made a recommendation, and I would ask, oh, is that right? I thought you were whistling at me. Mark, do you remember the motion you made?
Yep. Wasn't there a resolution? Which one are we on?
The Clerk position.
Tracy, do you have that motion from?
Yeah, was it, was there a res, that was it?
Go back to, no, that's just the Village Clerk's job description with changes.
The Village of North Hudson's Village Clerk's job description.
With the changes-
With the changes highlighted, or suggested by the Village President.
I think that was it, thank you Mark.
I'm sorry, I got mixed up with the other one.
Is that right? Do we hear a second?
Second.
Now you, Colleen? Any further discussion? The recommendations I made did not change the substance, they are mostly either grammatical or word change, and I just add a couple of questions that will be addressed, a couple tense changes and so on, so, the substance of it is, is not, make any recommended changes.
It's all in verse now, isn't it?
Pretty much.
Kind of in rhyming?
Well-
Well, I-
Rhyming Simon.
Chaucer's tales didn't rhyme, but they were pretty good, weren't they? Okay. All in favor indicating of the, accepting the Village Clerk's job description with the edits, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And I see that Chief Meandered up to the microphone on the podium, and he's going to address any questions that you have regarding the next item, which has to do with amending the two thousand thirteen annual budget regarding the sale per, purchase of patrol rifles. I will begin by commending the chief for the detail of his issue statement. And what I'd like to do is begin this by asking for a motion, and then we can talk about it.
I'll move to amend the two thousand thirteen general fund budget by increasing revenues in the property sales dash police department by forty-six hundred and eighty dollars, and increase the expenditures in public safety equipment, protective equipment category by forty-six hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Thank you. The need for this is strictly because of accounting. But, Mark, the podium is yours.
And that's really what I was gonna mention. The amendment, or the motion, sounds very much budgetary, and because it really is. As you look through the information and the chart on the second page, you'll notice there is really a zero-sum change. The way that it will work out is with the sale of the current patrol rifles that are twelve years old, and the purchase of new rifles, we won't be expending any additional dollars. It will, it'll basically be a wash, but for accounting purposes, and based on the fact that it's actual property owned by the village going out, and new property coming in, there needs to be, for lack of a better word, a record of that exchange.
Any board members have a question regarding the issue statement or the motion from before you? All right, a motion on the table, and just do a roll call vote. Start with you again, Colleen?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion passes. Doesn't look like we have any paper in the Public Works Department area, and our chairman is in Madison, so anybody else have anything regarding Public Works? Anything that you need to say, Mark? Okay. Public safety?
We addressed our primary issue.
Yes, we did.
We have nothing else required at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Next one's public welfare. And I see that we do have something to discuss. It's all yours, Stan.
Uh, you know, welfare met on seventeen January to discuss the, some change, some changes in the animal control contract for our animal warden. We had had, Terry had looked at the, with, you know, Gloria and Becky had looked over the contract we had, and they cleaned up some of the language to address some possible liability issues. And, and then we had a suggestion about, you know, hopefully that we have a licensing resolution in there that people that have, are, are paying for their, you know, tags for their animals, and we'd like the, the animal warden to, if she, if she does pick up local pets that she tries to contact the owner before she taking them to the impound facility, and we would recommend that to the, for approval to the board.
It's in your court, Stan. Wanna make a motion?
Oh, I would make the motion to, to, to adopt the two thousand thirteen contract that we have.
Second.
Very good. If this board approves this, the changes that we're making to this, that will be presented to our animal warden, Kathy Pelner, for her signature as well. Any questions? Look to the left, look to the right. This is a contract. We'll have a roll call vote. Start with you this time, Ted.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Now, the park board. Colleen, you're on. You can talk to us about that long-awaited and anticipated centennial recommended welcome sign, right?
Right. Well, in, in my packet, picture C was not in it, so I hope picture C was in your packets.
I'll show you.
Because that is the one that we had wanted.
How about, this is what we have.
A and B.
Yeah.
Are you recommending B?
I think you're recommending C.
I'm actually recommending C, which-
Does it look like A and B?
Show me your-
I think C changed, and that's the reason.
So-
Oh, that's-
C kinda looks like, I'm afraid.
C is B in your package.
No, it's not.
That's right.
No, it's definitely not.
The di- the difference is, George, they made the change that you requested.
Okay.
Of putting, making the top.
Yeah, but there's C here doesn't, shows it flat.
It's not round here.
Yeah.
Do we want it round or flat on the top?
Round.
We wanted it round, but I'm not sure.
Passing on down.
So it shouldn't.
Trusty head will be able to find his way home.
So, well, the, the question on the table here is, do we agree with B?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I love these signs.
Yeah. No, it was, it was in there. I just, since it said C on the-
Yeah, it said C.
But, Colleen, we're, this is your recommended?
Yes.
Okay, it's ours as well. Now.
So I moved to approve the purchase of two welcome to North Hudson signs from Levo Sign Works, using proceeds from the centennial celebration at a cost not to exceed two thousand two hundred. The purchase is contingent upon receiving approval from the Wisconsin DOT to install the signs.
Oh, second.
Thank you. I'll just share my concern and my issue with this. I am, as you know, very much in favor and have been pushing since the Centennial Committee came up with the recommendation to have a wel-, a pair of welcome signs. Here's the issue that we have. I can't see going ahead and purchasing this sign until we have approval from a resident or from two residents to be able to plant this on their property. The reason being that this, do you have an update from the last time we talked, Mark? So correct- Did you hear that? The State Highway Department does not want us to put it in the right-of-way. The right-of-way is eighty feet from the center line of the street. So if you go to the middle of the street, measure eighty feet in each direction, we can't put a sign along there.
Yes.
Hmm?
Nothing.
Okay.
They don't want us to, or they said we can't do it?
And do they state the reasons why?
What are they gonna do to us, take our road away?
They'll take the sign out.
Put it back.
Do they give any reason, I mean, any jurisdictional?
Mark, why don't you take, Mark, why don't you take the microphone up there? This is, this is a frustration that we're dealing with.
Wonder why I call it Mordor. Many, many times.
You know, there are very specific rules about what can and can't, what kind of signage can and can't be in a right-of-way. However, there are some kinds of signs that aren't strictly speaking highway signs that are allowed in the right-of-way, and maybe one of these isn't.
They're on wheels.
But there are some that are.
Go ahead, Mark.
Besides those.
Basically, I've been, this has been me battered around for, you know, off and on for a few months. Biggest problem I've been having is the person that did right-of-way signs in Eau Claire has left the position, and DOT has not decided if they're going to put somebody back in that position, out there. So right now, everything's being handled. Well, I just found out this last week when we were having Becky's going away party, I finally had a call from somebody at DOT, and it's the person who takes care of right-of-ways out of Superior. And she said she's looked through over everything that I sent Eau Claire, and I was told that since it does not, our sign is not the type of sign that can be put in the state right-of-way. You know, basically, it has to be, for us to be able to put the sign up, we have to have it on private property outside of the state right-of-way.
So where we sit right now is it looks like it has to be more than eighty feet from the center of the road, and it has to be on private property.
Means you'll be putting it up where the rod and gun club is.
Something does seem right.
Or in the middle of the river.
What about the signs that are there now?
They're all out of the right-of-way.
Which signs?
Or they're state signs.
The North Hudson signs.
Population signs?
Yeah.
Those are actually put up by the state of Wisconsin. Those are state DOT signs.
And unlike the city, we don't own-
Yes.
Highway thirty-five out there, the state does.
Nor can we buy it. That promo, program stopped years ago, right af-, I think right after the city got the rights to the road.
So it could be eighty feet minimum.
Right. Even if it's on private property, it's still-
It'll even, it'll be even farther out when we get up, uh, the north end, right-of-way up, uh, the bank and everything else is basically right around a hundred and two.
So the right-of-way's a hundred and sixty feet for thirty-five?
It's, it's incredible.
I mean, some of those houses are gonna be in the right-of-way.
Right. Something, something doesn't add up, I can't.
It's always been like that, Ted.
Mordor.
See?
You're not working DC.
Do you understand why I'm a little reluctant to-
You look at the map up there and everything else, where it crosses, where it actually crosses at the bridge time, it's roughly about sixty-six feet wide.
Let's find-
Will we have more information next month? I mean, should we just table it?
I am just, that, that is-
Are you actually approving it being installed in a certain location, or just the design of the sign itself?
Just approve the design tonight.
But not the purchase.
But not the purchase.
Right.
That's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted to, to stop. That, that, let's not buy a sign, it's, or a pair of signs that's in, gonna stay in the public works garage. Am I right, Mark? That's what, that's what would happen.
Yeah.
So we approve, we approve a sign design, and I would ask, Colleen, one of two things. Either do you wanna amend your, or change your motion, or shall we vote no, and then have another vote, another motion to simply approve the design?
I'll just-
It's your choice.
Change it to approve the sign and-
Postpone the purchase?
Postpone purchase until we can figure out how to do it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Very good. Tracy, you got that?
So we could, like, build trussels and hang it over the road?
Oh.
As long as they were outside of the-
I would like to publicly offer any piece of property I have to put a sign in the right-of-way if I can be the guy to dig the hole for the sign.
Wait, is that a motion?
That's not hard of a decision to offer, believe me. That wouldn't give me greater pleasure.
You're seeing signs over the highway? You used to be able to order electric banners for the, over the highway for Pepperfest. I don't know why that's allowed either.
Well, didn't we get clobbered on that, though, because it was the light poles or whatever?
Actually, it was XL, a lot of them do it, and the other state said no, and then XL came back after that, and then Tulsa said, you're only outside, you can't use your poles because-
Doesn't the city put up some banners just once in a while during the year?
But they own-
They own the road.
They own the road.
Thirty-five?
Yep, yep. Second Street, yep.
That's not Highway thirty-five, that's the second.
Where does Highway thirty-five go?
It's discontinuous.
Where's the end?
It's discontinuous. Yeah.
Second Street. That's why if you look at the signs on there, there is nothing that says Highway thirty-
So that's not thirty-five. It just, it ends, and then it starts again.
Mm-hmm. Were you looking for logic, Terry?
I told you we checked.
Mark already explained that to me.
That got checked at the door.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor to accept the, the design and not the purchase. So I'll simply ask for a voice vote on this. All in favor of accepting the design? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Very good. Item fourteen is to convene in a closed session. This is my motion pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one-C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise a responsibility to consider the hiring of a village clerk.
Oh, second.
Oh, starting to get worried there. Actually, Gloria was the one who was worried. We're gonna discuss why we need this once we get in a closed session. Okay, roll, roll call. Gotta do a roll call. Start us off, Ted.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Let us adjourn to the conference room.